All right, good morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM, February 2nd, 2022. We'll cause a meeting of the Ferguson City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quarrel. We started with business this morning. We'll have an update from Kevin Swenson on the 2022 Pebble Lake Golf Course rates. Good morning, Kevin.
Morning. Morning, all.
Morning.
Good morning, all, since I got to come and talk to you guys. I think I'm in 2019 was last time we faced face. Just a quick, before we go, I ask about the rates. I want to give you a couple numbers on traffic. Since it's interesting, the biggest thing that I track at the golf course is the total number of rounds played, which is the number of people that walk through the front door and play golf. 2019, we had a total rounds of eighteen, just over eighteen thousand. 2020, during the COVID season, we went to twenty-two thousand rounds. And last year was our biggest year we've ever had. We had just under twenty-five thousand rounds played. That's the total number of players that go that play golf. As far as youth go, youth, my youth kids camp in summer, 2019, we had about ninety-eight kids. Twenty during COVID season, we had zero. Did not hold the camp last year with one hundred and eighteen. And that's, that should keep buildings. Consistently, our guest rounds, which are the people that pay green fees and that visit our golf course, has been right around that five thousand, six thousand paid rounds played mark, which is pretty good. It's not near half, but it's getting there. A lot of, we're consistently around two hundred and seventy to three hundred members each year. And I think that's kind of a plateau and it's a small mark that we should forward. Try to keep that number right around three hundred. That's kind of the industry standard for Midwest golf courses. As far as rates for this coming season, we moved our rates for single memberships up a hundred bucks and for families up a hundred and fifty bucks each to help incur the costs that are coming on the maintenance side with lances through, chemical fertilizer, equipment repair, especially everything has skyrocketed like every industry. We have to forward some of those costs onto the memberships. But in turn, we're also going to give the members a complimentary range pass, which is about a hundred and thirty dollar value from last year. Basically, it's going to be a wash, but we're going to capture all the members and also our daily rates. We usually raise them a dollar every year. This year, we're going to make the range complimentary to all our guests as well, but increase that cost of instead of a dollar, it will be six per round. We'll also keep our daily rates under the eighty dollar mark, which is right in line with all the other golf courses. It's been sixty dollars a day. Any questions?
So say, so the nine or eighteen hole guest round is going to have a, the range is going to go up, but the the cost of the
The cost of the round will be six dollars, but we're going to give it that.
Oh, I see, okay. Any questions from Council Jim? Do you have a?
No, I was right at the last meeting. There's been a lot of discussion for about the last two, three months on what we should do. And it's the cost of everything that Lance is doing, the chemicals, the whole shebang is just, and gas prices, they went up fifteen cents again now. So, yeah, they need to be raised.
Sure. Someone, before we have discussion, I guess, let's get a motion to bring this to the council Monday night.
I will offer that.
Thank you, Tom, someone like second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Justin, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say, keep up the good work. It's great to see the course growing and thriving. And it's just another one of the key amenities that we can offer people and give them reasons to come here and stay and play. And so thank you for what you do. Keep it up.
Yeah, you bet. First year I was here, we did, it's about thirteen thousand people, and now we're double in six years.
So keep it up.
Nice, yes.
Yep, as somebody obviously who's been critical of the golf course in the past, I want to compliment you on what you've done. I think since you've taken over, it's been a much more business approach to the golf course. And I think that's reflected in the numbers of attendees and the rates. So keep it up. You're doing a good job.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Anthony.
That's big coming from you.
Yeah, forget what I said.
Thanks, Kevin. So we have a motion to bring these rates for the 2022 Pebble Lake Golf Course to the city council on Monday night. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
We have a secondly, second on the agenda, we have another update. We'll call on Mr. Sander Haybraken to give us an update on the airport. Airport manager, good morning, Sander.
So I suppose it's been about four months, I suppose, that we've been there. We started off doing some general cleanup around there, lots of cleaning, removing some old equipment, taking some stuff out of the building, fixing some doors, making the facility just overall a little bit easier to use. I took a little more time than I think we thought it would take from the start. The fuel system was in, it wasn't poor shape, probably, if that's the best description. That finalized this last week, the last funding I put in place. So the fuel system is now, I think, no longer a liability, which was when it first started. It's in good shape now, it'll be good for, hopefully gets replaced with some minimal maintenance. I lost it in my mind. As far as the airfield goes, the new LED lighting project got completed right before snowfall. Things are cleaned up. It looks really nice. It's actually really nice for the airport. It's in fantastic condition there. There's a new navigation piece that the iOSB replaced this year. A little bit of luck to come. And there's a component that's called the Mulsar system that has some problems. Shut down right now. It'll be back up and running hopefully in the spring with a little bit of luck also. Lots of luck each there. That sounds bad in aviation. So it's perfectly usable, but it's, it eats just a little bit of love and care. The ramp is going to be repaired this spring. There's some cracks and some general maintenance. When we got there, there was lots of weeds on all the cracks. It looked a little bit uninviting, so we cleaned all that up. That will no longer be a problem. As far as Sky Crew Services goes, we have, we added two aircraft for rent. We have one flight instructor and night students right now. That all goes, is going S plan, it's going well. The, we are well on the way with plans for the lobby. I was hoping to bring someone up here today, some plans, but they're not quite there yet. But we hope to start that as soon as we can, depending on how it all works with permitting. But nice to update that just a little bit. The, something else there. Oh, yeah. So we're looking to add a simulator. Hopefully, that will be there this summer. That's indeed a component for the airport for training. There's lots of people that want to fly when the weather isn't great. And only way to learn to fly when the weather isn't great is in a simulator. So you can fly when the weather isn't great. It's going to be backwards there. Rental cars, we haven't added the rental cars yet. Hopefully, that'll happen in the next couple of months. We'd like to start out with two right away and just get those added on. We need them for sure. There's a call for them back. At least every other day, there's somebody calling for a car somewhere. So the courtesy card is working well, but overnights are kind of tough on those. So I think we may not intend it for that. So we're just going to, we work with it, but I'll have to add those sooner than later. And I think that's about it. Oh, new projects, so the new fuel system, hopefully for, did I say that already? New fuel system for 2022. That'll be the biggest thing if that happens. A really good addition. I think that's about all I can think of. If you have any questions.
First of all, thank you. That it sounds like you guys are doing a good job. I remember I rode my bike out there. I think it was like a, you know, it was like six o'clock on a Thursday or Friday night or something like that. And here's Sander out front scraping and painting on the, on one of the doors. So thanks for all the work that you put in out there. Have you, you know, are there records, you know, so traffic, you know, are you seeing? I mean, I know you've only been there for a short time, but compared to, you know, this time last year, where the record's kept at that point, you know, where you can compare? Or is it just still too early in the game for that?
It's probably a little early. We can measure by fuel cells. Our Jet A fuel cells have increased significantly. There's lots more jet traffic through there. Now, this, you know, January, when it's like this, not too many people choose it as a destination, so. People looking to leave maybe, but that's it. But no, our
Careful, jeans in the background.
Our gallons are, they have increased for sure. And now that the fuel system's in compliance, we can start a national marketing campaign, which creates Fergus Falls kind of like in the spotlight for overflying traffic, which is really what it needs. That has now started. We finally were able to sign off on that. Because there's a lot of companies that look to have the fuel provider certified that this is a safe stop. And we couldn't sign off on that unless the fuel provider was spec, and it is now. So we hope that we'll have traffic, I think it will for sure.
And have you installed the cookie oven yet?
We've been experimenting with the cookie oven.
Well, if you need a guinea pig.
The cookies will be there. Yeah, we've been trying out different cookies and different things and they will be there for sure.
Because the point
Remodel, there's a cookie tray, fresh baked cookies.
Yeah, because I suppose with how much you guys travel around the country, you know what it takes to, you know, make an airport attractive to, you know, a pilot might say, hey, you know what, let's stop in Fergus because they've got great cookies or great smile or you name it, so.
I'm not so sure if you're judging me right now.
I'm right here, I'm right here with you. Yeah, I'm excited to see what you guys are going to do. Keep it up, thank you.
Thanks, Tom, Justin.
And maybe just have a comment. Obviously, I think you guys have done a fabulous job and I'm sure you're getting feedback from the pilots. But I've got a friend that flies quite often and has flown into Fergus quite a bit in the past. And he said it's completely different coming in. And you don't get some of that radio when you're coming in now, or you didn't get that in the past. And so he had a lot of positive things to say about what you guys are doing out there. So I'd just say, keep it up and thank you for that.
Good to hear.
Oh, and you mentioned the simulator. You know, my father's a pilot and he, and it sounds like people will come from quite some ways away to use this simulator. It's quite a draw.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there are too many around that are certified, especially upstairs of the airport. It's such a great place where it's, you can fly in to use it, which people would do for sure. And then if they don't have to plan around weather, they can just show up and it's a clean facility. They can use it. It's a good thing. It'll be, it'll be a nice location. We're actually hoping for two, but we'll start out with one. Two would be the ultimate goal for sure.
Any other questions for Sander? Well, thanks, Sander. And yeah, it sounds like things are going well, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks for the partnership.
Thank you.
All right, I have number three as an update on franchise fees. And we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseff. Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor, council members. It's good to see all of you this morning. We're back in front of you again to talk about franchise fees and some of the things we learned over the last few weeks as we put numbers to paper. So just wanted to make sure this is, can I turn it on? All right, so I just wanted to start it real quick with a roadmap showing how we got here today. So as you all may recall, back in 2019, at the beginning of 2019, we had a consultant group come and present a payment management plan work session. And that was kind of the first introduction we had to the concept of utilizing franchise fees to fund streets and road improvement work. Shortly after that, we had a council retreat, if you recall, at the Big Woody Event Center, where the council identified streets as their top priority. And in further detail, we discussed what a franchise fee may look like as an option for funding additional street projects based on the identification of that being our top priority and the biggest need in the city. May 2021, we came back. That was, you'll recall, the funding, Brian and Lyndon interviewed here in front of us. And they talked about streets. And we watched some nice videos talking about how to stay ahead of the streets. And again, we brought up the fact that franchise fees are probably an appropriate way to help bridge the gap on some of those needs. August of last year, we discussed in detail with the tax levy committee what the impact of franchise fees may look like. And then that was brought up as part of both budget discussions that were held here publicly in front of the council. In December, we had the council authorize staff to move forward with the possible implementation of the franchise fees, look at the analysis, bring those numbers back. And that brings us here today where we want to present those findings. And then if the council is on board, we might highlight the next steps in the timeline after that, with the implementation of the places. Just a refresher as to what a franchise fee actually is. For state statute, the city can impose franchise fees on utility companies to use the public right of ways as they deliver services. The utility companies collect those franchise fees and then they send them back to the city, at least quarterly, to be used for the purpose decided by the city. We do have three utility companies that operate within the city. Lake Region Electric, Otter Tail Power, and Great Plains Natural Gas. All three of those companies have been engaged. They've been very helpful and have been good partners in discussing what a franchise fee may look like and how we may implement that. You'll recall at the last meeting, we had highlighted three percent, four percent, and five percent as potential options as it relates to franchise fee. One of the goals of staff and, you know, the council may share the goal, is to be able to eliminate special assessments on reconstruction projects. And that's how we really honed into that five percent number. We needed to be able to raise adequate revenue if we go down this road, to be able to offset what those special assessments would look like. Still have meaningful dollars to do more and get ahead on some of the street needs. So that's kind of how staff gravitated towards the five percent. I know at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the difference between a flat rate and a percentage. And obviously, more commonly, in our neighboring cities and partners see the percentage. That's why we You saw this last time, but I want to reiterate this. This is estimations that we received by Otter Tail Power based on the average electric bills. And I want to note that this obviously will vary based on usage, based on size of home, all of those factors. And this is just Otter Tail Power. So if a customer has Great Plains gas, they're going to have a franchise fee on that bill as well. So these numbers are going to be low. If a person has, like myself, has only electric and no gas at their home, their electric bills are probably higher and this number may be higher for most folks. So this is just an average and this is only data provided by Otter Tail Power. So it may be different for Lake Region Electric and it will certainly be different for Great Plains. But you'll see that on average, meaning some will pay less and some will pay more. And I know there's somebody that's going to share today what they pay. So we'll get to that. But fifty dollars annually for residential, hundred and seven, hundred and seventy dollars, excuse me, for small commercial, and twenty-nine hundred for large general service. Add that five percent threshold.
What portion of the bill is it actually on? Is it, because like on your Otter Tail Power bill, there's obviously the actual electric and then there's like some standing charges and then there's obviously fuel surcharges and then there's taxes. So what, what piece of five percent is it?
I'm going to ask my good friends at Otter Tail to answer that question.
Morning, your honor, members of Council, Ron Spangler from Otter Tail Power Company. Great question. Typically, we would apply that percentage to everything other than taxes. So customer charge, energy charge. If there's a customer that has a demand charge, it'd be applied to every one of those charges. So you make up the five percent.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
And then is it taxed then? Have we paid tax on it too? If it's before tax?
Say that again.
Will you pay tax on it?
I don't believe there's any tax on it.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ron. So that's, that's the average. You want to jump in here, Mr. Fish? I know you and I talked yesterday about your situation.
Well, the average is quite low. Because mine, I went through my bills. My Otter Tail one is a hundred and four dollars and twenty-two cents. My Great Plains was twenty-eight thirteen. So you're looking at a hundred and thirty-two, thirty-five. And not only that, but already for the month of January, my franchise fee would be almost twenty-six dollars. Now, January was a cold month and so it's going to average out less than that per month. But what I'm looking at is this increase is more than most people got, I would say, most everybody got on their social security. And as we know, this is a town of a lot of older people. And many of them are living on just their social security. I don't think this is the right time and I will be voting against it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. You know, I don't disagree with what Councilman Fish is saying. You know, I just would point out again, this is averages. So some are going to see less, some are going to see more. I know mine will be higher than
Yeah, I know. I guess, I guess the other thing is on special assessments, that's great that there's going to be none going forward. But there's a lot of people out there paying special assessments. So now they're paying for other people's special assessments coming forward. And I guess I'm not sure that that's the right way to go about it.
Yes, that's a fair point. The other thing I would say, well, just in general, you know, and Jim and I were brainstorming a little bit yesterday. You know, if we're going to do more and get ahead of the streets and want to do more, the money's got to come from somewhere. And so I don't know if that's a property tax increase, if that's something like this, which spreads it out more evenly and includes people that don't pay or tenants in apartments that have an electric account that don't pay property taxes. I don't know what that answer is, but this is an option that's been identified. It's a common option. I think there's four hundred cities in Minnesota that have these franchise fees. There's several within Otter Tail Power's territory that do it as well. So it's not a new concept. We just have to decide as a city, the city council, if this is the right fit for Fergus Falls, if this is what we want to spend resources on and invest in to get our streets. And street lighting, I don't want to forget that. That's a very important component of these fees to a place where they're more acceptable to the general public. So that's, that's probably the discussion that we haven't had. I'm just going to keep moving through here quick and then we can maybe have more discussion on that. Next step from the last time we talked, obtaining the council's blessing, we got that on the 12/20. We were able to validate the estimated franchise fee revenues. The last time we discussed, we did not have the revenue numbers from Lake Region Electric. We've since plugged those in. So these reflect data from all three utility providers. We have developed the timeline, determined the impact related to assessments. And we're here today to present these findings. And then the next step would be to implement via ordinance. Here is what those revenue projections look like. Nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is what we project at five percent we would raise between the three utility companies. Two hundred and sixteen thousand is the cost of the Phase Three street lighting project. So if you reserve that amount for that project, that would leave about seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that could be dedicated on an annual basis towards street maintenance. And this is where I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who's going to walk us through these scenarios.
Thanks, Andrew. Good morning, Bill.
So on here, we're giving you a couple of options, what it could look like. The first column there being the current situation. How do we fund streets currently? So we have, if we have that annual franchise fee available of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand after taking out the street lighting portion, we looked at an average reconstruction project of six hundred and fifty thousand for the street portion. You know, we looked at going back to the Mount Faith area over by the school when we did that, the hospital district when we did that, and a couple others as well. So if we're spending six fifty to do a neighborhood street part of that, keep in mind, we still do the utilities under a reconstruction like that as well. Those are funded out of our utility funds. We're just segregating the street portion here. And say, on average, two hundred and sixty thousand of that goes in special assessments to the residents benefiting from that project. And then we also use a tax levy. You know, we'll bond for a project and then pay for those bonds with the tax levy over fifteen years. So three hundred and ninety thousand, either coming from that tax levy or from municipal state aid money we give for streets. For instance, like up on Burlington, we put a lot of MSA dollars, we call it municipal state aid for streets. So there's total funding for that. If we were to not change that, keep that going as it is, then we'd have another seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand put into additional street projects. Option one is where we do away with the special assessments, which is what we've come before you with the recommendation. So we move that to the franchise fee bucket. Still do a tax levy to fund some of the debt service on the bonds or MSA dollars. Then we have five hundred and eight thousand to do additional street projects. And then, of course, another option could be have the franchise fee replace the use of a tax levy or those MSA dollars. And then you'd have a hundred and eighteen thousand to do additional street projects. So not a lot of extra in that option. But wanted to make sure and point out, we fund street maintenance out of the general fund. We levy for that about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's where we do our seal coats and overlays. And then when we do projects around the city where we're doing reconstruction, you know, we'll bond at times. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that too. And that's why we're pointing these options out. Again, we're looking at option number two, where we replace those special assessments.
Option number one.
Option number one, thank you. Yep, call it number two. Any questions on that, just as a scenario? Again, these are averages. I know the Mount Faith project was a large project. So that one individually, the assessments were higher, I think like four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the amount of the city portion of that higher as well. But when we look back over time, some of the other ones were lower, so.
I maybe just have a question. You know, we started the conversation at five percent to do away with the special assessments. So kind of two questions to that would be, one is other communities that are imposing these franchise fees. Are they, would they, you know, could we do a lower amount for the franchise fee and just still continue with the special assessments? Is that uncommon or common on other communities? Or is that how we came up with the five percent? Because most communities that are doing these franchise fees aren't doing special assessments as well.
I think it's a fair statement to say we saw a combination of that. Some cities, their franchise fee is even just going in the general fund for general street maintenance. They're still doing special assessments. So it's just an additional funding source. Some certainly have done away with special assessments being a big selling point to that. So the residents, yes, you're paying this on a monthly basis on your bill. But when you come to do that special assessment, then, you know, you're not doing that. You're not getting that larger bill at that time.
Just to follow up, I mean, I think to Mr. Fish's point, I mean, I like what you're laying out and, but understand the concerns of himself and also residents of the city. You know, if we did a lower franchise fee, which maybe would be easier for the whole and then also the special assessments that are currently being collected, wouldn't have an issue if we continued doing special assessments. But it'd probably be much easier and cleaner and neater if we could just do away with it and have more going in. But just my comments.
Yeah, I think my concern would be, like, if we're going to do this, gaining a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, we're not going to get ahead on fixing streets. So we have to go option one and whether we look at, you know, whether we just use the MSA dollar portion as opposed to the city share. But, you know, I mean, I don't want to see us reduce what the city, you know, the property taxpayer today is paying for that four hundred thousand. We need the four hundred thousand and we need to put money into roads to fix them. So if we don't get that half a million, then the exercise of what we're doing is futile. I mean, we're doing is futile. I mean, because $100,000 doesn't go anywhere to fix, we're never going to get ahead. So we either, we're either going to do this and fix roads as the outcome or we should just leave it at status quo.
Thanks, Anthony. I think I had a kind of a similar comment. And then a question as well about, you know, we've had some issues in the past with justifying the improvements that reconstructions of roads have had and the appraisals. And that's been kind of a messy situation. I know, maybe not on the reconstruction in town, but on some of the newer developments. But I think it's so unfair to say that's not going to get any easier in the, in the future to justify special assessments. And I've always kind of had a problem with, you know, a city, right of way, a city road, and then charging a homeowner. Again, it doesn't address the question of what was done in the past, how to, you know, is that fair? Is that not fair? I think we have to look at it going forward. But I do think Jim makes some good points. And the other thing I just want to just, if, to Anthony's point, if we are going to take, try to take a substantial bite out of this apple and try to get some of our roads improved, we all know we're raising revenue, right? You have to, the revenue has to come from somewhere. And we could have the option to raise property taxes to have this. But my math tells me it's probably at least 20% increase on property taxes to get this kind of revenue, right? I mean, if you're talking, it's close to a million dollars. That's a 20% increase in property taxes. And then it just comes down to a question of, you know, who's paying that?
Left pocket or right pocket?
Is it the, is it the, is it the property tax? Is it the property owners? Is it the users of the utilities in town? Is it the nonprofits? Is it those who aren't paying property taxes right now who are using the roads? Is this a more equitable way of distributing that? I guess that's a question that you have to answer. But I hope we all agree that we need to fix the roads. So the money has to come from somewhere.
And I know some of our other outstate regional centers, and I'll look at our Otter Tail Power people, too, we see a 5% on some of those. I think like Crookston for sure and Bemidji, probably both are at the 5%. So that's where we looked at that. And that's why we came in with that instead of coming in lower and thinking, well, in a year or two, do we have to redo this and bring it up as well? So that's our rationale for coming in with five. So.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but I also want to just reiterate what you just said in the sense that when we do special assessments, just so folks are aware, we have to hire an appraiser. It takes months, as Brian and I have learned over the last few years on these projects. We've lost three, four months. In fact, we've lost building seasons. And then, you know, you miss a building season. We all know prices are going up. We've ended up in court over the appraised values more than once.
Lost?
Had mixed results in court. We've lost in court. And so quite frankly, it adds cost, time, you know, inflation, all those things. So there is a benefit, I think, for us, from the city's perspective, even to get rid of special assessments. There's a certain benefit from the homeowners and business owners' perspective. So I don't want to belabor that, but there is value there as well. So.
Just one other point, and then I know Scott has, because are we, do we run the risk, though, of if we're going to increase the amount of funding, are we going to increase the amount of special, you know what I mean? Like, we get to a point that the special assessment cost that we would raise by doing more street construction is going to be eaten up by anything. It just, the cost of doing business, I guess, but.
That will happen. That will happen to an extent, but I guess, you know, there are two benefits. We just need to make sure we realize both the intentions. One benefit is getting rid of special assessments. The other benefit is having additional revenue to actually get ahead. Of course, we won't have as much as we want, even if we go down this road, because the needs are endless. But you're right, $118,000 isn't enough to justify these structural changes. But, you know, maybe we're going to see how it's.
I think Anthony is exactly right. It's pretty significant change we're implementing if we do. And if we don't see some pretty significant results, I think the people rightly will be upset with us. And I know the street lighting itself is $270,000, which is a big project. So I think we need to see results if we're going to do this. Yeah. Jim?
On the special assessments, the only, the only way you would have more special assessments than what you have coming in would be if you do one big project.
Right.
And I mean, you'd have to take a look at that before.
Sure, sure.
That you wouldn't want to bite that much off.
I think if we're going to do a major project like that, this, we probably accumulate funds for, you know, two or three years leading up to a project of that magnitude. So there's going to be some of that happening as well.
Sure. Scott?
On the street lighting specifically, since we've had this project going on to replace street lighting, it may be assumed that that's a one-shot expense. But the $216,000, that's an annual cost of operating the street lighting. Is that a correct understanding?
Correct. That's annual. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 has been within our general fund budget. The first year we were looking at implementation, we were, I'm going to have to go get a water glass, decreased our maintenance because we turned all that over to Otter Tail Power. Were we able to just basically shift within the budget? Then for a couple of years, we actually needed to increase street lighting within the tax levy of the general fund. But this $216,000 is not in the general fund budget. So this would be that new funding source for that. If we don't do this and still want to go forward with Phase 3, then we'd need to budget for that in coming years and increase our general fund, then to compensate for that $216,000 as well. And again, annual, like you said.
Okay. And then one final comment on the special assessments question. It's been said that one of the goals was to eliminate them. And I probably didn't understand that fully when we first started talking about it. I guess my expectation was that we would reduce them, not necessarily eliminate them. And again, there's been a lot of talk about what's fair, what's equitable. I think it's fair and equitable to expect a property owner that gets the benefit to pay a portion of that benefit. But it's been too expensive for certain projects, and that's a problem. So if we could reduce it some, or a lot, I think that's fair. I think that's appropriate. Eliminate it entirely, maybe that has to be looked at on a per-project basis. You know, as Jim mentioned, some of the bigger ones, maybe that's just the way it's going to have to be, you know, with some kind of special assessment. So I think as this gets written as, you know, what we're going to do with this money, to spell it out that it will eliminate special assessments is maybe not something we want to do. As a, to have it as a goal to reduce, that gives us some flexibility on how we might approach it down the line.
It's a very good concept, and that's something certainly the council can do. We don't have to, you don't have to restrict this to eliminating. Again, we certainly are not eliminating for new construction. So new build-out areas certainly should have special assessments. But we talked about that as well, as far as, yeah, would we still have some assessments? You'd still have those appraisal issues. And maybe if we're reducing them where it's really not a problem, then maybe, I'm just thinking out loud, maybe we don't have to do appraisals then. I'll look at Brian, too. But something we could think through. But leaving that option open, and I'm glad you brought that up, too, because this chart is just an example. Every project is going to look different. The funding sources, as we put it together, will have to be what makes sense at that time. But so that's up to the council. But you could certainly still leave that as an option in there.
I think on the special assessments, you know, as you say, we've, we've kind of been to court, we've kind of, you know, we've lost more than we've won. I mean, I think, you know, it would have to be of a magnitude where we, we know we're going to make those improvements, you know. And it's, I mean, it boils down to kind of halves value. And if we're going to increase the value of the home, and generally, I think the cost of construction and the increase in value is where we, where we lose. We don't, we can't demonstrate that lift, which is why we can't. So I think this, and as you say, it might help, you know, from a selling of homes, not that homes, you know, it's hard to sell homes today. But if there are no assessments on homes going forward, then that, that should make it easier to sell a home, too.
And I just, I would just say, thanks, Anthony, that if you buy a 50-year-old house in the city and you pay property tax on that 50-year-old house, I think it's a reasonable assumption that you have utilities and roads to that property without paying above and beyond to get a functioning road. To me, that's a basic assumption. But I've always felt like existing properties in existing neighborhoods, that's the city's responsibility. But that's, that's, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think special assessments should be assessed to the property owners. But that's, that's my personal.
And to answer the question earlier, too, we could do a lesser amount and probably get away from appraisals. If we, if we are assessing $1,000 as a round number, we know that's justifiable. But if somebody contests that, we have to defend that. And we're going to spend time and money and, you know, it's going to delay things to do that. So just keep that in mind. If the council wants to go down the road of franchise fees, which is a decision that's looming before you, I would hope that you guys can make it clear what your desires are as it relates to the vehicles, so we can communicate that to the public. Because what I don't want to do is, is strongly say the council's decision said no specials going forward, and then three years from now, we're looking at doing special assessments. To be clear, we're talking about no specials as staff's recommendation, but it's really up to you guys. We don't care either way. A nominal special assessment would be fine. No special assessments, we feel comfortable being at that level. So those are decisions the council has to make. I only have two more slides I'm going to blaze through. And we spent plenty of time on this.
Sure.
I appreciate the good dialogue and the discussion this morning. Here's a timeline. If we go down this road, Monday night, we would direct the city attorney to draft the ordinances. First and second readings would happen February, March. It would be published in the newspaper, March 12th, become effective on the 27th of March. A few of these utility companies need to communicate with the PUC, so we built time in for them to do that. And then we would be proposing or looking at implementing the franchise fees as of July 1st. So a handful of opportunities to discuss this further and public comment and input and whatever you guys want.
Under utility companies, why isn't park region and charter included? Just out of interest?
We already have a franchise fee on them.
Right.
That's something.
All right, so.
And then one, just finally, Your Honor, just for the council's knowledge, if we go down this road, there's actually six ordinances that need to be adopted. And frankly, if, even if we don't know the road of franchise fees, the first three are going to apply. We need to update the franchise agreements with all three providers. One of them is expired, one of them is soon to expire, and the third is desiring to work with us in having them all standard and uniform, which I think is good. We've got them all on the same timeline. And then if we go down the road of franchise fees, there's three separate ordinances which would spell out those franchises for each of those utility companies. Six total ordinances that have to be active. I'll stop.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. So I think there's plenty to digest, and there's plenty of public comment I think that we'll all receive as this process, the discussion moves forward. So at this time, we just look for a motion to bring this to the city council, ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance, and then we can continue that discussion, amend that ordinance over the timeline that Andrew.
I made that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Caroline. In favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Can I just ask Bill a quick question?
Yep.
So I'm, I'm no math wizard, but I did help my son with his homework last night, which is actually, it's this stuff. It's what percent of what does what?
Now, you know I don't have my calculator.
So, you know, Councilmember Fish, you know, referred to his bill. And so I, you know, I figured it out. So for the last 15 months, my average electric bill is $130. And I need to talk to my kids about turning the lights off, but I think they maybe own some Otter Tail Power stock that I don't know about or something like that. So, but so unless I'm wrong on my math, 5% of 130 is $6 in some sense per month?
About right.
Which would, what's that?
$6.50.
Yeah. So per year, that's.
Six times 12.
Times. Thank you, Justin. I appreciate that. So $78 a year.
But you're above average, Tom, aren't you?
Well, in a lot of ways, but no. Yeah, I mean, $78 a year to spread that cost of those road improvements out. I don't know. So, yeah, I just look forward to more discussion on Monday night. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom. All right. Chiller, arena chiller update.
Okay. So we have big topics for you today, and here's another one for you. As you are aware, the, actually, the court authority of Fergus Falls owns the community arena. But we have an agreement with the city of Fergus Falls that the city does all operations and all the maintenance and any improvements to it is done by the city. So that's why we're here before you as the city council. So we're going to start with this past summer, 2021. As you recall, well, I'll back up one step as well. So talked about the ownership. We use the school's chiller, chilling system to create the ice in the ice arena. So it's a, it's a shared chiller that feeds all the school secondary buildings as well as then the arena. So this past summer, 2021, the school attempted to provide ice for the arena as well as cool all the buildings, and there was not capacity enough to do both. It was never designed to do that throughout the entire summer. So I want to be clear about that, that that was never going to be the case. The school did that by turning off valves and zones. The school really, you know, went, went all the way for us on that to provide ice. But the capacity is not there, and they cannot do that again as well. Now the school is looking at putting in an entire new chiller system to do all of their buildings. And then you can see in the packet, we have a letter of intent from them to sell to the city the existing chiller system that is, you know, physically built there. And then that could provide our ice generation. It could, you know, it certainly would do our season. We do a six-month season right now, as well as extended ice or even year-round ice, if that was to be chosen. The price, you know, this looked at the value from when they put it in, depreciation, brought it down. $575,000 is what is being proposed. In addition to that, we would share the costs with the school to break away from the system and then rehook it up. So we're on our own on that. And of course, then any operations will be on, on our own as well, because we will be a completely separate facility. The school has had the compressors and whatnot. They're going through that right now. I think, Guy, have they just finished that?
They did, yes, last week.
I think so. Those have been reconditioned, checked over. So should for sure have a 25, 30-year life, probably even longer, is what we're being told. Because it, we'll be taking it over in good condition. So we want to bring that before you, see what the council thinks of that. Is this something of interest to you? Again, the school is looking at going a different direction and putting in their own system that wouldn't be connected to us. So on that one aspect, if we want to keep that arena going, we do need a chiller system. Obviously, the chiller system that we're connected to would be that option. So.
Yeah. A couple of questions on the actual unit. Have we had an inspection? Or are we going to get an inspection on it? I know, I mean, those tubes, if the water treatment's not good, you can get a lot of corrosion and then weeping on the tube bases. And I know that at the moment, those couple tubes are, A, hard to get hold of, and B, they're expensive to replace.
Yeah, the system has been looked at pretty in-depth, specifically about tubes, I'm not sure. But the person that did the inspection will be back again next Monday, so I'll ask him about that.
Yeah. I think, I think we should have an inspection done on it. They can, like, hydrotest those tubes to look for leaks. And just, just because it's, it's obviously, it's almost a $600,000 unit. So to spend, you know, $10,000, $15,000 on an inspection is probably worth it.
Thanks, Anthony.
Bill, when you talk about the chiller, that includes the new chiller that was installed this past year or two? Is this, is that correct?
It does. That chiller basically doesn't work. It was an addition to our chiller or to the school's chiller, I'm sorry. This was a school project. You know, for a number of years, trying to get that additional piece of equipment to work, it ultimately does not, does not work on that. The school.
Had a lot of time and money.
A lot of time and money. We've already put money into that. The school put money into that. That was factored into this price as well, as the school looking at, yeah, we both put money into this. And they would have come in a little bit higher, but they're bringing it down, down to 575 to give us a credit as well, so that we're kind of sharing equally in what went into that additional piece of equipment that didn't work.
We should, we should look to sell that. We should look to sell that. Those units sitting, they deteriorate pretty quickly. So, I mean, you probably, we probably would get as much back for it today as it cost us to put in, just because it's available.
And it certainly would.
The new year.
It's a small piece of equipment.
The new year, the not used. The new unit, the new unit that we're not using.
We'd have to talk with them.
That's the schools, though.
Oh, right. They should sell it.
So, Bill, I assume that the, with the school's purchase of the new chiller system, they looked at just upgrading the current dual usage, and that was not less cost-effective? Or more cost-effective, I should say? That was not more cost-effective?
It was not, yeah.
I assume, yeah, obviously, they looked.
Type of system isn't really meant for cooling buildings. It's made for making ice.
Got it.
Tom? So, full disclosure, I have two kids and hockey. But also, I was, when, when the initial arena construction project came around, I was vehemently opposed to it. I was young, and, but, but knowing now what I know about economic impact, I mean, that's what we really have to keep in mind here, is, is what that arena has the potential to bring to our community as far as, I mean, summer camps. I mean, we go to summer hockey tournaments, and, and it's easy to spend a lot of money in whatever city you're in. And, and let's, let's add Fergus to the list of places where people go and spend money. I mean, we can't just look at it as, you know, it's not just some luxury. I mean, what did we add, 80 kids to the hockey program this year, I think? And, you know, and so you've got something for those kids to do all summer long, plus you've got the economic benefit of having people come in and stay in our hotels, and eat in our restaurants, and shop at our stores. So, so I would just encourage anyone thinking about this issue to take that into consideration, because that's, it's a huge driver. It's a great amenity to have in our city, you know, helps to put us on, on the map. There's not a lot of cities our size that have two sheets, and, and not a lot of cities our size that have year-round ice, so. And just talking with coaches, you know, even, even in the one summer that we had year-round ice, where we had kids in the summer hockey program, I mean, we've seen an improvement, you know, in, in those players. So I think, you know, it's going to make our program that much stronger, maybe get us some state titles. So let's just, let's, let's look at the big picture when we're, when we're thinking about this, and think of the benefit that it can have for so many people.
Thanks, Tom. Do you want to talk about funding source, Bill?
That's how obvious, I mean, we're talking a big dollar amount here. We do have money in the bank. We do have $1.1 million in the community arena fund that is left from when we constructed the facility. Remember, we issued bonds, we received donations, and we collected a local option sales tax, which we did collect that for the full term. We certainly allocated all those sales tax dollars to paying down the bonds first, so that, you know, looked at, those are allocated towards the bonds, so what would be remaining would be left from what people gave towards that facility, restricted for that construction of that facility, which this would certainly qualify, because it's part of the system to run the existing facility. That's where we're looking at that, coming from that $1.1 million. Again, $575, we will have additional costs in addition to that, I don't know what those are yet, for the connection charges. You know, they, I'm sure that's not going to be cheap either, but Guy, any idea when we'll hear on that estimate?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, all right. So unfortunately, after our council meeting on Monday, but we'll be able to come back to you then when we get those numbers. So we wanted to get this in front of you, because the school also wants to know our interest in going forward in this, so that they can start moving forward with looking at their process of purchasing a new system as well.
Thanks, Bill. So I guess moved.
I'll make a motion that we bring this to the full council.
Bring it for the council for discussion.
I'll second that, and I just have a comment, too.
Thank you, Caroline. Yeah, go ahead, please.
And obviously, in the note, it says if we want to provide ice to the ice arena, we need to look at a chiller, and this is our best viable option. And then the other thing is, it's super helpful that we have money in the bank to, to make it happen, so just those two points I want to point out.
Thank you, Caroline. So the motion is to bring this.
Maybe I'll just add too, you know, just with the timing and timeline, I mean, it's from when the potential shut-off could happen, and then the reconnect, and, you know, providing ice and so on and so forth, we're trying to work with the school on a timeline that it would work for both groups, obviously, so, you know, right in the middle of the hockey season now, so, or towards the tail end, so trying to work that out. So the sooner we can let them know, then the sooner they can start planning, we can build out that timeline and set expectations for the user group, so.
Thank you, Justin. Any further comments? Scott?
Just a couple. As far as the sale price of $575, it would be nice to have some assessment as to just whether that's really a fair price or not. You know, I don't buy chillers every day, so whether that's a good price or not, it could be $100,000 one way or the other, I wouldn't know. And so it would be, if there was a way to give us some explanation of the value there, that would be good.
We can, I'm thinking we can give that to them on Monday. How the school arrived at that number, showing what the original price was, and then, as far as comparability to other places, I have no idea, but we'll, we'll see what we can bring back to you on that.
I did see a chiller on Amazon for a half million, so.
The other comment, then, would be, you know, what if we just said, no, we're not going to do this? Then what happens? Well, we wouldn't have summer ice, and the school would have to come up with some other plans for their, whatever they want to do, basically. And is that a good option or not? That's where we'd have a decision to make. But it seems like we don't, in many ways, it seems like we don't have a choice, and we're kind of backed into a corner here, and that's not very comfortable. But as Caroline said, you know, we got money in the bank to cover it, it's probably not a bad deal, and so with a little more clarity on just the value of what that is, I think we'd be more.
And just to clarify, too, I think we wouldn't have winter ice except for on Cleveland and Channing, right?
We wouldn't have ice in all, yeah.
Big Alice, yeah.
We do have an existing agreement with the school that they provide us this chiller capacity, but this new system, I think what they're looking at wouldn't work well with us, right, Guy? Is that a?
Right.
So.
Okay.
Bringing you back a little more.
So we'll have some more information on this, and we'll bring it to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion to do so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Good news is, we're not quite halfway done with this agenda. RTC Phase 3 Preservation Project, Brian Yuvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, good morning. Mayor and council members, I'm glad you disagreed, but based on last council action, here's the RTC Phase 3 Work Scope. Stan Tech has submitted a proposal, I do have a modified review and closing your packet, but with the base bid work scope and the alternates approved, estimated total design fee of $151,800. I just want to go through the proposal quick, just to point out a few things on the second page. Building 29, Memorial Building, I just put a note behind that, that will be included as an alternate, however, it's showing in the base bid. I did strike out some of the other alternates that would not approve, and also modification to the reimbursable expenses that had, how I write that number. But just based on other projects, we have to do 30, 60, and 90% reviews on it, this proposal does not include the mullabatement, I would have to bring that back to this council, along with construction services agreement, everything too, if everything proceeds. So we also will need to contact, consult with deed in regards to the eligibility of these work items. Just like that past project, Stan Tech's fees are reimbursable expenses through the state grant, and showing all the proceeds from the grant Phase 1 and 2. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept Stan Tech's professional services agreement for Phase 3, in an amount of $151,800, and also to initiate public improvement 9508.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to bring that to the council for discussion tonight? Thank you, Jim. Second, Scott, thank you. All in favor of bringing this to the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it, that motion carries. Item number six is the second addition to Pebble Hills Estates. Again, Brian Yuvaro.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The current property orders for the second addition to Pebble Hills Estates, they have signed 100% petition requesting city to construct new water main. It's approximately 1,100 feet at this time. This would serve the new subdivision. As I mentioned, it's an unofficial plat, the plat has been semi-approved, but this is, final acceptance of this plat is contingent on the petitioners to enter into this agreement for 100% petition. The petition does meet the requirements of our local code and Minnesota statutes 429. If acceptable, my department will prepare the preliminary injury report, and present it to the council for, at future tech, in a future meeting. I just want to know at the earliest, I give it a time of year, we don't have dad on this area, so I would not anticipate this project, earliest it can be constructed is late this summer, just because we don't have to go through all the design, however, we have many steps moving forward. So at this time, requesting, I just want to know, too, the petition is included in your packet for review, so requesting to accept a second addition to Pebble Hills Estates 100% petition for water main, initiate public improvement 8231, and to order the preliminary report for public improvement 8231. I won't come to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Jim?
Is that scenic drive?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just water, not sewer?
Sewer is existing sewer in that vicinity right now, just no water main.
Oh, it's already there?
Yes.
My understanding that the sewer was on one side of the road, and the water's on the other side, is that correct?
I don't know if the sewer is on one side or centerline, I don't have this.
I thought, I thought the water was on the west side, and the sewer on the, on the east side. That's what I had heard from the one owner that's on there right now.
Yeah, there's, there's, on this particular plat that's included, it's all undeveloped, on those seven lots that they're subdividing.
Yeah, and it's, it's going on down from the one owner.
Yes.
That built there, from Burringtons.
Correct. That's about the termini of, that'd be the northern point of the water main connection, and we would extend it to the south-southeast. And that's with this petition.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Brian, and we can bring this to the council by motion.
I'm second.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Next item is zoning ordinance update, and we'll call on our city planner, Karen Farm. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning, Your Honor, and thank you, council members. I will also keep this brief, just to provide an update that the planning commission did consider the draft text at its January 24th meeting. They did make a few tweaks, and those tweaks are included in the draft ordinance that was included in the committee of the whole packet. They'll be holding a public hearing on that ordinance at a special meeting on Thursday, February 10th, at 5:15 PM. And I was just hoping to come to committee of the whole today to answer any questions that council may have, and possibly pass on any suggested recommendations that council may have to the planning commission prior to their public hearing, just to expedite that process, if there are any comments. So with that, I will just turn it over for questions.
Thanks, Karen. Just for the benefit of the public, do you want to just give a real brief overview of the changes that were, is that?
Sure.
Is that easy enough to do for?
Sure.
Let's put you on the spot, but.
No, I, I came prepared, I just know that we're, we're coming up against that 8 o'clock here, so.
Appreciate that.
We, the recommended changes would be to remove the apartment hotel definition that was existing under the code, which required a certain number of apartment, apartments and hotel units. That's removed with the logic that the business zones, such as B1 and B3, would already allow for mixed use, so that would be redundant. And in the B2 business zone, which is our common commercial district, those don't allow for any other residential uses, so it just wasn't something that made sense to continue in this zone. It removes the definition of motel entirely, seeing it as redundant with hotel in just current, current way that we see that. It does add a definition of extended stay hotel, but with the definitions of hotel and extended stay hotel, they focus on the commercial features. So distinguishing it from apartments where you can just walk in, you can rent a room, you don't go through a background check, don't put down a security deposit, things like that. Extended stays are distinguished from hotels in that they have kitchen facilities, so under the current zoning ordinance, an extended stay, as we think about it, wouldn't really be possible, because hotel units are prohibited from having cooking facilities in our current zoning ordinance. So we leave that feature in the suggested revisions, but then have this option for an extended stay to, to have those kitchen facilities. It also defines transient, which wasn't defined in our current ordinance, so it specifies that you live somewhere else, this is not your primary residence, and that language comes from state statute that's related to hotels and lodging. So those, those are the summaries of the changes.
Thank you, Karen. And you mentioned, or I'll just mention again, the special meeting, the planning commission, February 10th.
Yes.
And presumably, then come back to the council after that.
Yes.
Public hearing.
January 21st, city council meeting, assuming that things progress.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? Yes, Scott?
This was prompted, as I understand it, from a purchase inquiry on the Motel 7. And so specifically, how would this amended ordinance then affect what has been suggested for that, for that property? Would it, would it now be able to go through with what was being asked for, or would it not be able to? How would, how would it affect us in this specific case?
So some were asking about apartments, so completely apartments retaining no hotel usage. So that would still not be permitted unless they requested a rezoning, which to this date, no one has. Some folks were asking about extended stay hotels, so as long as they were not using those as, as basically tenancy, as, as apartments, this would now allow that property to be used in that. So it just depended on who was asking.
Thank you.
My, my question was on the, the definition of hotel is deleted and replaced with the following. It says hotel guest rooms do not contain cooking facilities. Most, most hotel rooms now contain a microwave, and I think you probably should maybe define that, because equally in the definition of extended hotel, you then mentioned built-in cooking facilities, which includes a microwave. So, you know, pretty much, I don't think you go into many hotels now that don't have a microwave. And, and should there be a, a maximum on a, on a, on an extended stay hotel? Can you stay there indefinitely?
There were some examples of extended stays, particularly more business regulations that I saw, that did have some suggested parameters. You can certainly bring those to the planning commission at a public hearing and.
Because then, you know, coming back to the, the word transient that you have in the other language, maybe there should be some sort of cap on how long you can stay in an extended stay.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Can I just make a, a quick comment on the Pebble Hills item? I had to step out to deal with one of my little electricity consumers, but I, I would have abstained from that Pebble Hills vote, as I have a relative that is involved in it, so just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to item number eight, is another update on the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Again, Karen Farm, our city planner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, so at the last committee of the whole meeting, the consulting service plan came and just gave an update to the committee of the whole about the plan, and notified that the public comment period was open, so that public comment period has now closed, and I'm happy to answer any last minute questions that there might be. Otherwise, we would be looking to place this on the February 7th agenda for the city council's approval of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Questions? We had a pretty in-depth, in-depth presentation at our last committee of the whole, so I think everyone feel confident with where that master plan, pedestrian master, bicycle master plan is at. Public comments closed. All right, thank you very much, Karen. We'll look forward to that, bringing that to the next city council meeting. Last item that I know of on the agenda is an Otto Bremmer grant request, and we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, thank you. As you guys know, we've been working on this end project in partnership with the New Kiwanis, who have been sort of heading the community aspect of it. We did this a couple years ago, where we present, or we submitted a grant on behalf of the project to the Otto Bremmer Trust. They are asking that we do that again this year. So what I'm just requesting is that you put it on the consent agenda for February 7th, so that I can do the work on that grant and send it in.
Thank you, Clara. Anyone have any objections to that going on the consent agenda? Someone like to move that by motion? Thank you. Justin? Thank you, Brent. Questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Andrew Bumsef.
Your honor, if the council has five minutes to spare, we do have one more item.
Awesome.
Okay, let's do it.
I was hoping, I was hoping maybe that leaves one more.
Surprise items.
Hopefully, somebody's doing the ice cream.
Well, I could come back at some point today. I've got to get to the shop to get a couple of... Morning, Brian.
No, thank you, and I will be brief here on this one. This is a project, this before you right now is an exhibit that's a little bit more, more in-depth, but this is for the campus view, the state's development. I just want to point out what you're showing up on the screen. There is a road north thing to the top side of the page. You can see Park Street, and you can kind of see in the little right, but that's Park Street going north-south, and the proposed road to services development, as shown moving to your left, which is the west of this area. Per base, past comments at city council meeting, we are getting close to looking to advertise for this project. I believe the bid opening date is March 2nd. Everything has been going good, we're proposing to do this in two phases, two work scope phases. But the main thing that was brought up, as you might remember, is some comments about sidewalks. This exhibit right here is, I want to show, I kind of have it highlighted in yellow right there, that is the current proposed sidewalk layout to service development. There was questions about having sidewalks on both sides of the street for the road that services property. I have that outlined in red. We can certainly do it, it is not part of the current plans, I just wanted to point out a few things. By adding the sidewalk, not only cost, you know, this will add project cost to the site, which we know with all the material prices and everything, it's given me a lot of unknowns. There's also some grading issues too, as well, with some of the driveways. I have it kind of in the cloud of revision areas right now, but at design, these grades are pretty steep driveways, at the threshold. By adding sidewalk, we would have to do some redesigns, and that redesign might consist of some retaining walls, additional grading, things of that nature. It can be done, it's just a lot more associated work. Third point I want to point out, by having that sidewalk there too as well, it could inhibit parking, because we know in city code and everything, people that might live in those residences, and those particular residents that were shown in this area is, I can't remember the units, if they're duplex units or not, however, anticipate there will be a lot more vehicular parking and everything to get in. So, at this time, I just want to present to the council here, like I mentioned, the area shown in yellow is what's currently on the proposed plans that we're looking to outbid. I just want the council's direction, it's going to require the developer to add the red portions of the sidewalk for the service road that serves this development.
Brian, does the sidewalk, the yellow sidewalk to propose to the south, does that connect up to anything existing?
Existing, if you turn to your second page, it just basically...
I don't have any pages.
Sorry.
That's all right. No, that's all right.
It serves the front edge of the development, so the southernmost portion of that development, there has plans and we will be working on the extended sidewalk north, top of the page, up to the, that's home. That is in the works, but it's not part of this property.
And that would front homes on the south side, got it? So, the lot, so it appears now it doesn't really service, the sidewalk doesn't service any residents, any, right? It's just an outlaw? Is that a...
What, so the residents have reside on the other side of the street as well?
Sure.
There is, as we farther, like I said, this is just a snatch. There is houses, you know, the Outlaw A, what you're looking, there will be more houses as we go farther down the road to the south.
And then, a couple of quick points. This would be, so it's $55,000 and $16,000? Is that the estimate?
About $70,000, yeah.
And then, this would be part of the cost that would be paid through TIF financing?
Yes, it would be a project cost that we're looking at, but I want to know, just with the sidewalk alone, there would be some reengineering, that we don't know to maximum extent, retaining walls and that, so.
Sure. And then, I guess, is, you can present this as a decision on, given direction on Monday night, is that something that's acceptable to give people a chance to consider? Yeah, I agree with council member Kwame, that if we're going to build and develop neighborhoods, I think we need to, sidewalks are an important part of community, they get people outside knowing their neighbors, it's just, it's an important part of community, that's, you know, our existing sidewalk. I can't imagine our existing neighborhoods in this community, what they would be like without sidewalks, and I think if we plan, yes, it's going to cost some money, but if we, I think it's an investment that's worth, that's worth it. So, I would certainly be in support of the, you know, the additional cost that would be picked up through the construction of the entire project and paid for with the tax income and financing, very small portion in consideration of the entire project, but that's a decision this council can make on Monday night if that's, if that's acceptable. Justin?
Yeah, maybe, one clarifying question, the yellow sidewalk that's outlined on that street, will there be houses to the, to the east of that? Like, Outlaw A? Will those be houses abutting that sidewalk as well, or no?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit more detailed footprints and everything, this was kind of one of the plate pieces and everything, but that's a stormwater pond, you see those lines that are really hungated together? Those contours for a stormwater pond.
I fear there's not going to be houses there then, right?
No.
But there's some stuff of that.
Yes, correct.
So, there's some stuff.
I just would end with this, and I don't want to get up on my high horse, but as we progress, our roads get bigger, our garages get bigger, and our sidewalks become less and less, and I don't think our communities are any better for it, so that's my two cents.
We should give everybody a chance to shovel sidewalks.
That's...